Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the January USD 298 Board of Education meeting, our first meeting of 2022. If you'll notice in front of you, it is Board Appreciation Month, and so the district has graciously bought us all blankets, so feel free to take that home. That way you feel appreciated for showing up here twelve nights a year plus. If you get cold, wrap up in it. Turn the heat down. So, but no. Thank you for all your time and energies. Those of you that are on Zoom, you're welcome to stop by the office. I'm sure they'll be here, so stop and pick those up. If you look down the agenda, there's no additions. We would accept a motion to adopt it as printed.
I see that.
Okay. She would say? Motion by Gina, seconded by David, David, to adopt the agenda. All in favor? Okay, seven oh. Any delegations? Seeing none, we will move on to consent agenda. Our consent agenda will consist of the approval of minutes from the December 7th, 2021, and the special meeting of December 10th, 2021, and the special meeting of December 13th, 2021. It'll also have the payment of the bills, the Treasurers' Report, Clerk's Report, and Lincoln County Rec. Commission Report, which if you look under Addendums, your red tab, the Rec. Commission Report is there if you haven't had a chance to look at that. So, I would take a motion to approve all of those.
I approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Gina, seconded by Jason, that we approve the consent agenda consisting of minutes from the December 7th, December 10th, and December 13th, Board of Education meetings, payment of the bills, Treasurers' Report, Clerk's Report, and Lincoln County Rec. Commission Report. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. If you will turn to Addendum 1 in your packet, you will find a resolution to establish the election of school board officers. We have to approve this, and I will read it so that we can move. It moves our election to July, so it aligns with our school year. Resolution number 12201, resolution to establish election of school board officers, resolution of Board is still on that one. Whereas KSA 721133 requires boards of election to elect the board president and vice president at the first meeting on or after the second Monday in January of each year, or at a later meeting date during the calendar year, if so determined by the board at that first meeting, and whereas USD United School District 298, Lincoln County, Kansas must act each year on or after the second Monday in January, or at a later meeting date during the calendar year, to establish when it will elect its president and vice president. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 298, Lincoln County, Kansas, will elect its school board president and vice president at its first meeting of the Board of Education in July 2022, adopted by the Board of Education of USD 298, Lincoln, Kansas, the 12th day of July 2022. We will all sign this. If you can sign this before you leave. Those of you on Zoom, if you would swing by the office and sign this sometime in the next, as soon as you can, and it works out for you. And with that, I would take a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Okay, Jessica?
Sorry.
Okay. Motion by Jessica, seconded by David, that USD 298 Board of Education adopt Resolution number 12201, resolution to establish election of school board officers as outlined in Addendum 1. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Since we lost our vice president, we are going to elect a vice president tonight to serve from now until July. I will open the floor for nominations at this time for vice president.
Vice President?
Yes.
I nominate Gina Eckhart.
Gina Eckhart has been nominated by David Bell for vice president. Do I have any other nominations? Do I have any other nominations? If not, I would, if not, I would take...
I'll second.
A second, and someone to move that nomination cease and cast a unanimous ballot for Gina.
I approve.
Okay. Jason moved that nomination cease and a unanimous ballot was cast for Gina. Okay. David, just a second, let's get all the paperwork here. Okay. We have David nominated Gina Eckhart for vice president. Jason moved that nomination cease and a unanimous ballot cast for Gina. Any other discussion? All in favor of that? Okay, seven oh. All right. Congratulations Gina. You would like you can jump across. Next, we have our tech center presentation.
Update? Yep, update. I don't really have anything to show you, but I think this will be the first official announcement of what we have going on in our partnership with Salina Technical College. I am pleased to tell you now and officially that we have a signed contract on that property, and we have deposited earnest money on the property, which was formerly the Diesel Repair Shop over in the industrial park. We have a February 1 closing date on that. I think it's very, very important that people understand the, a few things about this ongoing process. Number one, the financing. Number two, the value that it brings to our educational community, and the value that it brings to our community as a whole. And this is countywide, so this is just not USD 298. So, first of all, I'd like to talk about finances, and hopefully everybody can help share this word, so that facts are what gets out and not misinformation. It is the goal of myself, and I'm going to say for the board, that this is not a USD 298 funded project. The goal is, because it is countywide, and we do have stated interest from tested, from Sylvan Grove, and even schools outside of our county to participate in this, the goal is that USD 298 taxpayers do not fund this. That is my personal goal, and I know the board aligns with that as well. We don't have the funds to pull this project off. I'll just be quite blunt and honest with you. So I would like to tell you where we are so far on funding sources for this technical center. We have two donations of $50,000 apiece that we'll approve in the next agenda item. I have applied for $285,000 from the Dane Hansen Foundation. That grant application will be reviewed January 21st, which will give us total pending funds of $385,000. The purchase price of the building was $280,000. The needs that we still have are classroom space, internet fiber installation, a bathroom remodel to be ADA compliant, desk tables and whiteboards, et cetera, for the classrooms, signage on the building, which I think we can do ourselves with our plasma cutter and the metal shop. And we do have to have an electrical upgrade for welders and machinery. The first two programs that we're looking in that facility are going to be welding and automotive technician slash some diesel training as well. We have a commitment from Salina Technical College. If we supply the building, they will supply equipment and instructors. So our part of this agreement is to provide a place for them to operate. There are two apartments in that particular building, which may come into play as we look at recruiting tools when we have openings. Mrs. Flynn and I talked today about applications that are out there, and there are many places right now that are providing free housing. I can't remember the districts that we looked at, but there were multiples that had cash bonuses, free housing, et cetera. So in this marketplace, it's tight, and people are recruiting, and they're trying to do anything to incentivize people to apply. So whether those are needed, we'll see, but we do have them. The purchase price includes them being fully furnished with everything that's in them now, so they are basically move-in ready right now. The other thing that I think is really important is for our kids. When we look, when Mrs. Flynn looks at the senior class, the majority of those students are most likely not college-bound. Now, will this affect those kids? Unfortunately, no. However, it gives us an indication of what our needs are, and we need something to prepare our students better for something outside of a four-year college post-secondary experience. The fact that this can be countywide, if we care about kids, we care about kids, period. We don't care just about Lincoln kids. We care about Lincoln County. We care about surrounding counties. We're all in this thing together, so the participation cannot just be limited, and that's why we've opened it up. The other thing that I think is critically important is everybody knows there's an empty manufacturing facility over there in that park. We have no idea what sort of entity might come in there. However, we have had conversations with Salina Technical College that whatever entity comes in there, whatever their needs are, we will tailor our program to what their needs are. So we start out with automotive technician and welding. Should somebody come in there that needs machinists, CNC router operators, and things like that, Salina Tech is willing to morph into providing a workforce-ready student for whatever comes in. If an HVAC, if carrier air conditioners comes in, we will switch and provide HVAC. There is a multitude of things that they are able to supply to custom workforce training for whatever entity would come into that facility. We also have classroom space at the high school, a conference room, and an adjoining classroom, where they are interested in bringing a CNA/CMA program here. So hopefully in the fall, we will have three technical college programs here in Lincoln, in our new technical center building. And that, again, automotive technician, diesel, welding, and CNA/CMA, and hopefully we can grow from there. I think the facts over the last several years have shown that there is a great need for technical training, and students are needing that, and it's just exciting. But here's the, here's the word that must go out. The word that goes out is USD 298 taxpayers are not funding this project. And that needs to be as clear as a bill, and as people discuss it, as they will, as they should, that needs to be the common thread of information, that 298 is not using our funds for this building or this process. And we've had some unbelievable donations. It does cover, you couldn't have a more perfect opportunity for Dane Hansen to get involved in, given their spokes of interest that they look at. Doesn't guarantee that they'll approve that on the 21st, but that's where we are right now. We wait till the 21st, we see what they say, we close February 1st. It is an incredible, exciting opportunity, and this should generate all kinds of goodwill and, you know, just the vision of moving forward for this county and surrounding schools who are participating. So that's where we are. Exciting stuff.
Okay. Thank you. Very exciting. So, as we, any other discussion on that? Anybody else have anything? Okay. Moving forward, we will accept donations that we currently have for the tech center project. We need to approve donations from the USD 298 Education Foundation, the amount of $50,000 on behalf of Dr. Barry and Mrs. Jane Murphy, and then $50,000 from the USD 298 Education Foundation Board themselves for the tech center project. So these are two of the generous donations that we've already had from our, from locally to the building, so.
I agree. Accept those donations with many thanks.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by David, seconded by Gina, that USD 298 Board of Education accept the donations from the USD 298 Education Foundation in the amount of $50,000 on behalf of Dr. Barry and Mrs. Jane Murphy, and $50,000 from the USD 298 Education Foundation Board for the tech center project. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. Next, we have a calendar update, legal recommendations. If you'll look to Addendum 2 in your packet. I need to read through this. Okay. We need to approve the calendar. Okay. Unless you follow. No more of the... I don't know that there's, everyone's seen this, I think, on where we need to, with the calendar that we approved, and I think this has been discussed, the contract days are lower than they've been.
By four days.
By four days. And in order to protect those four days, we have consulted legal guidance, and if you will look in Addendum 2, we have what is recommended that we add in our negotiated agreement. So when negotiations come around, this calendar will be approved pending that verbiage added in negotiated agreement. If that is not agreed to, then the calendar will go back to the calendar committee to be revised. So that is how we are looking to approve that tonight. Approve the 2022-2023 calendar as presented with pending negotiated agreement on legal language concerning calendar days. So that will be the motion that we will make tonight. Clear as mud?
And basically, there's two options for negotiated language. One just allows teacher workdays not to exceed 184. The board concern was if we reduce days to 180 and then go back to 184, that there will be compensatory issues with that. This protects us to not exceed 184. However, it allows us to have some variety between.
Can we read something?
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by David, seconded by Jason, that USD 298 Board of Education approve the 2022-2023 calendar as presented with pending negotiated agreement on legal language concerning calendar days. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? You guys were in favor, right?
No.
Seven oh? No?
I think it's...
Is Nate opposed?
No.
Okay. I think you're slightly delayed.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, if you'll go to Addendum 3, KASB policy updates. And there was quite a few of those. Hopefully you got a chance to read through those. I don't know, is there anything that we need to note there, or just?
Not really. I read these, I didn't find anything of concern. Some of it is just legal update. There's an update for challenging instructional library books. There's a clause which is new to us that doesn't allow employees to utilize our school accounts to purchase products, like through food service and things like that. There is a issue about integrated coursework and performance instruments. There's nothing in here of concern if you've read it. Nothing that I saw is anything.
Okay. These were all updates voted on by delegates at the policy. I would accept a motion, and then I can read through all these. Motion by Gina, seconded by Jessica, thank you. That USD 298 Board of Education approve the December KASB policy updates as follows: DJEGADIFIIAJBCBJCDBKG, and table of contents as outlined in Addendum 3. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, seven oh. All right. Now, moving on to parking lot bid process.
I just need board permission. At our workday session on a Saturday, we discussed two projects that we'd like to get done this summer, and I'd like to get on the work job list for these before it gets too out of hand. And the first one is permission to bid out the high school parking lot repairs.
Refreshment memory, is that going to include doing something about the new parking lot outside of the north entrance?
That is an excellent question, because we've been discussing that, and we're going to get bids that repair the existing and a repair of existing plus the parking lot paved on the north end.
Because that's kind of the master.
Yes, it is.
For anybody who's been working over there.
Bumper cars.
It is, bumper cars. And there's no rhyme or reason to the way people park. I think if we're going to get this for the existing parking lot, maybe that's more good.
Consider that. Okay. That has been discussed, so yes, good point. Thank you. Any other discussion on that? Questions?
How many bids do you typically try to get on this project like that?
We'll send it out to as many contractors who are interested. There's a lot of times we get bids, we get one response. Well, I had that company come last year and gave us a bid, and I'm guessing it's not going to be the same price this time, but I'm assuming they would be interested, and then I just have to reach out. We got a flyer from another asphalt company. I need to see if anybody in Salina is interested. And they'll go through the procurement process, and there'll be sealed bids, and we'll have a deadline, open them up and see. But many times, since I've been here, it's one envelope.
You don't have any companies, be sure it lets me know.
Absolutely.
And resources.
Yep.
Yes.
And then we...
Before. Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Gina, seconded by Jason, that the USD 298 Board of Education approve the letting of bids for the reconstruction of the parking lot at Lincoln Junior/Senior High School. Any other discussion? All in favor? Seven oh. Okay. And then next on that same list, and that was discussed, was window replacement. We kind of went around the school and looked at windows and stuff, so.
This would mainly be for those south-facing windows that have fallen apart so rapidly compared to everything else. There is a possibility that I could put this under some asset funding, because doors and windows have qualified in some instances for some reason. But again, I would just like to get some bids. Right now, I know of two companies. I have a Zoom later this week with a company to discuss it, and I've talked to somebody who actually came out and looked at them, so we'll see what kind of response we can get, if we actually get a solidified out bid.
Does this have anything to do with the library and the office?
No. This is only the south-facing window. Well, I could get bids for the rest of it, but I'm afraid it will be sticker shock. The first person that came out said the library would be over $100,000 itself, which would include the office, but I know that...
The art room, right? It's clearly leaking, yeah, at the bottom.
Is that included in this or not, the art room? I think that's what she's asking.
Oh, well, the art room is east-facing. I didn't see, is there problems there? I didn't think the east-facing windows were damaged.
They, there was an original that when they built the building, the floor, they didn't put concrete along the floor, they just put a tile over, so there's a gap, so they were dropping, like, if they pushed anything on it, it would drop down. But I know that some of them have been fixed, but I don't, I'm, was it leaking?
I think so.
The water. It's probably popping off, like, my windows popping off, those little seal things might be, like, they're bowing out.
Yes.
Yeah. That's how all the library windows and office windows are bowing out, and they're all popping off the bottoms. Yeah.
Anybody that I have come out, we'll just do a complete walk-around, and maybe they can prioritize degradation, and we can just see what's a must-fix, what's an option to Question?
I'll make a motion to go ahead with the...
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Jason, seconded by Jessica, that the USD 298 Board of Education approve the letting of bids for the window replacement project at Lincoln Junior/Senior High School, mostly south-facing windows. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Is there any way that we can have them tier with some of those east-facing, like the library, office, art room? I mean, if they're, if they're out looking at it, and then they can prioritize?
Yes, that was discussed, and now we'll walk the whole building. We'll walk the whole building and kind of rank them in order of need.
I thought same thing, too. Yeah.
But sorry, I can't hear a lot of what's being said until now.
I need to talk into our microphones more.
So the last window guy that came, they recommended that we put, that we don't do...
Strip wall.
Yes. And so that's a whole nother project, so it's not as much of prioritizing, if you're going, you can't prioritize certain windows, if you're going to put that wall in, that's an all or nothing project.
Yeah, it just might be good to have someone's opinion on those two east-facing that probably, the art room's probably going to need the same wall, because, so. Okay. Anything else, Nate? Okay.
That was it?
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and I think, I think their volume is coming from the computer, and then, yeah. Okay. All in favor of the motion for the window replacement project? Opposed? Okay, seven oh. All right. And one we've all been waiting for.
Okay, so I thought I could figure out how to make these things present, but I can't, so whatever. This is, this is the latest and greatest update, and I'm just going to tell you how things are going right now. For whatever reason, the information we're receiving is there is a major issue right now with positive cases. Last week, Lincoln County itself had over 30 new cases. The estimate from County Health was if everyone would go get tested, it's probably three times... The estimate from county health was if everyone would go get tested, it's probably three times that. We had a Zoom meeting on Thursday with Randy Watson, the Commissioner of Education, and all the state superintendents. And this is how fluid things are right now. So the CDC put out information with a five day quarantine model. KDAG immediately said, Kansas Department of Health immediately said, that doesn't apply to schools, it's still ten days. So when Dr. Watson said it was five days, everybody blasted the chat and said, we heard from county health that it doesn't apply to schools or, and everything else. So then within about twenty-four hours, KDAG came out with the exact same things that CDC is now recommending. So I just wanted to show you what the current status is for different cases. So if you have, if you are in close contact, and now from what I've read, it used to be ten minutes, now it's fifteen minutes. So every, within six feet or less, fifteen minutes. If you're fully vaccinated, there's no quarantine, but they're saying you need to wear a mask for ten days. You can test if that's available after five days. That's fully vaccinated, asymptomatic, showing no symptoms. If you're a close contact, not vaccinated, but still a symptomatic, this is the new quarantine guideline, five days, then mask for ten days with an opportunity to test after five. If you're symptomatic regardless, you get tested and you isolate or quarantine until you get test results and then you fall into one of the other previous categories. If you're positive, regardless of where you are, we are now isolating five days and then masking for five days. So I can't tell you what next week will bring. I can just tell you what our current situation is. We are still somewhat, I believe, in a bubble, thankfully. Being isolated isn't a bad thing, but I do know from health professionals, those in my family as well as just people that we know, we're back to there's no place available. There, there was a guy on Dr. Watson's Zoom, we had with KU Medical Center Director. There's a company who places patients if you need to find a bed for somebody and he didn't have positive and upbeat news to share. What I have read and what I was told during that Zoom was that ninety-five percent of hospitalizations are unvaccinated people. Of the people who are on ventilators, one hundred percent are unvaccinated. So that, that's the data that gets shared amongst the superintendents. We do have positive cases in our schools. We are following these protocols class by class. There seems to be more a higher infection or, what's the word I'm searching for? Contagious. The elementary is, is having more difficulties than junior, senior high school. But i- if you've ever been over there, it's very close contact, very touchy, very, you know, elementary kids, they're just a little more social and don't respect the bubble like older kids do, so. Denise is doing her best to manage with staff outings, with student positives, and we are going to class by class masks, and she has had to do that. And if you want to share some of that, that's fine.
Absolutely, and I think we are very similar to where we were in December. We were hoping that extended three week break would cut down not just general illness, because we have high rates of general illness, influenza A, E, strep, stomach flu, et cetera. So we're seeing that as well as quarantine students due to household contacts. And one thing to think about is we have some students who've missed two, four, six weeks, particularly young children, because maybe mother gets it, mother gets over it, father gets it. That same student has to quarantine. Sibling gets it later, that same student has to quarantine. So that's really affecting, particularly for young children, it is vital that they're there. So we're seeing more students out for longer periods of time than we ever did last year. The other thing to think about is why we probably have higher rates of infectious spread. Obviously, as Mr. Crenshaw talked about, younger children, they touch more, they touch their nose, they touch their face. But also younger children aren't vaccinated at the rate, as the rate of adults and older children as well, so. And although their symptoms appear to be mild, it's continuing to spread. We have staff members out, we have students out, and we usually start the day with a certain amount of students out and by the end of the day, we've increased that. Today, we're at fifteen percent of our general students out. If we take a pre-K three out of that, because they're not every, there every day, we would probably be at eighteen percent. So it's definitely affecting us. And when we think about, we have students missing more in-class instruction than we did last year. Mr. Crenshaw and I have been kind of brainstorming ways that we need to make up that loss. Particularly with young children, it's very hard for them to come in after school, you know. A seven and a half hour day is a long day for them. So we're trying to come up with ways and that'll be continued discussions that we have on ways to make up that time, if you will, or, or get those academic concepts down because it's pretty critical at this point. And for early childhood kids, it is important that you have to be there. There's, you know, just no, you can't replicate that and you can't do it virtually, so.
When, when we talk about the frustration of students not at grade level, this situation isn't going to help us in the long term. We will most likely need to try to put together some sort of a summer educational boot camp. I don't want to call it summer school because that usually has a connotation of I've gotta make up a class or something like that. But we may need to use some S R funds, and that's why I've kind of stopped spending that money because I don't know where this is gonna go in the long run. But we may have to have some sort of a summer school educational fun fest or something that sounds positive and kids will come to it. My thought is this, as long as we have staff, we're gonna stay open. We could get to a point where we don't have enough staff and that's the biggest problem. We were at a point where, had we not closed prior to Christmas, if we had sent kids home that needed to go home, I would have lost seven staff members who needed to take care of their children at the junior, senior high alone, and then we can't staff that building. So that's where we get into, we just don't have a substitute teacher pool that's deep enough. And we have ongoing discussions at what point, what number of staff is our tipping point or we're gonna have to close again. We just play it day by day and we'll see how this plays out. So that's kind of where we are. If you have any questions about it, I can try to answer where we are COVID wise.
Scott ought to have a question. Up until now, we've had a full school mask mandate, so at this time, are we not having full mask mandate with just ones who are positive?
We are in the elementary, so we are not in a mask mandate district wide or building wide. The good thing about elementary is they're just isolated enough that if you get a positive in a classroom, you can deal with it with that class. And we can take meals to them, we can mask a single class without doing it building wide.
So I'll give you a scenario. So if you would have a student there on Monday and that student would have went home that night not feeling well, tested positive on Tuesday, those, just those students in that class would go ahead and mask up for four days because the fifth day would be Saturday. Following those recommendations, they would wear a mask for five days. So, and there's times that we don't mask, when we're at gym class, if we can socially distance. Whenever we're outside, not easy to go outside right now, but when it gets a little nicer and we can go outside, when we can go outside and socially distance, we don't wear masks and also when they eat. Fifth graders don't wear them when they play their band instruments, but besides that, they should be masked at all time. And the more that we can get parental cooperation in that, the easier the process is. Our number one goal is to keep kids in school. Really, the only defense we have against that is wearing a mask when they're exposed due to classroom contact.
And I, and I will say this, and I've said it to the staff when we, I don't know if it was this year, last year, COVID seemed last decade, whenever it started. You know, as a science teacher, I under, I can have an understanding of a virus. This virus spreads on respiratory, it doesn't have wings of its own. It spreads on droplets from your breath. So if you, and anybody that wears a mask knows, it's wet, it's sweaty, it's gross. So what's it doing? It's stopping the bus that's transporting the virus, at least some, at least some. I, I can't, you know, you know as well as I do, the information is all over the board. So do I think a district wide mask mandate is needed? I don't think so right now. But I'm not afraid to pull that trigger should we feel like we're getting to that point. I do believe just because it stops the respiration droplets that that virus is on, that there has to be something to that. Just scientifically speaking, there has to be something to that. It is a type of barrier. Can't say that it's perfect. I can show you data that says it's ineffective. I can show you data that says it is effective. But I think we have to be proactive and do everything we can to try to keep things going. We can't continue to close down and extend the school year. And right now, we're okay on hours, seat hours, but I don't, you know. Nobody has a magic ball to see where this is headed.
Not just related to COVID, but I covered the office today for my secretary when she went to lunch. And every time a student comes into the office, we write those notes down. And in thirty minutes, I had three students come in, one with a bad headache, one with a stomach ache, and one with a sore throat. We took their temperatures. All of them didn't have a temperature, but all of them had different symptoms. We asked all three of them to mask up until the end of the day. Because we're seeing students not present with typical symptoms. Some have been diagnosed with COVID with the stomach flu, some it's just a headache, some it's a sore throat. And because there's so many other illnesses out there, just until you kind of know where we're at, we ask them to mask up, mask up when there are plenty of general symptoms.
And I would say this, when we were under a district wide mask mandate, our attendance rates were better than they have ever historically been, even against cold, flu, normal illnesses outside. So that doesn't mean we need to wear masks all the time because everybody will be healthier, but they did have an impact.
Absolutely. In January of last year, we averaged four to six students on a day. Twenty nineteen, before COVID was ever here, we averaged nineteen to twenty on in January. And I don't think that was just because of masks, it was a combination of factors. People stayed home when they were sick, there was limited events, there was socially distance, you know.
And we cleaned the heck out of our buildings.
So all those factors did help, yes.
That fogging and that disinfection process is continuing, but we're back up to fourteen to nineteen kids absent most days.
Every day, yeah.
Yeah.
And at L E S, we're fogging nightly. We used to do it on a rotation. We are fogging nightly. We'll continue to do that through January, but we're, we'll reassess when we get to March.
So that, that was a question I had pre-COVID or like a normal winter at the grade school. We were looking at nineteen a day gone or that.
In that humidity, not more.
And that's kind of where we are currently? Is that what?
Well, if you would take out illness, just students that are, have illness, stomach flu, strep throat, we're looking at fifteen to seventeen, and then if you take students out of quarantine or COVID, that's right now another ten, twelve, fifteen, depending on the date. So you combine those two, that's the number that you're getting.
Makes it a little higher. Okay.
There is a a lot of people, I believe, in our community that would like to see us refraining from mandatory mask mandate, if at all possible. Our experience in our family, mask mandate before Christmas and sinus infections lasted two weeks, went to the doctor twice. He finally asked, are you wearing a mask at school? We said yes, and he said that's why your sinus infection is so bad. And that's, I guess, why I'm asking that we refrain as much as possible from the mandatory mask mandate for everybody.
I think I'll, is my mic, is this on? I think I'll kind of echo what, what David stated. I'm also not in favor of a district wide mask mandate. I think what's currently going on, the way I understand it, is class by class.
Yes.
And basically, if there's just, if there's one case, it's more or less a week of masks for that class.
Yes.
Depending on the timing. I don't, I don't see a problem with that. I totally understand the reasoning behind that. I also do think, kind of in the younger kids, I've got a first grader and wearing masks for kids that small, I don't think they get the, the learning experience they do without masks just because it's harder for them to understand their teachers. It's harder for teachers to understand them, especially if, you know, communication skills in younger children aren't what they are in, say, high school age. So that's why I kind of, I would like to stay away from masks as much as possible, but I also understand the, the health risk with it. So I think the current, the current policy that you have is sufficient at this time.
Well, I think a lot of what we have to do is follow county health, and I think that's, as a school, we don't need to play health department, but let them do what they need and we'll follow what they suggest, so. Anyone else? Okay. Anything else you want to add to that? Okay. I think we will move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, well, let's talk about fun and happy things for a second. At the junior, senior high school, we implemented a grab and go breakfast program, which is kind of a second breakfast for students to have an opportunity to get something to eat before lunch who may or may not have been able to get their four breakfasts. And today's count was a hundred and three breakfasts. Last week, we had a hundred, one day we had ninety-six. Typical seven thirty to eight o'clock breakfast is thirty to forty kids. So I believe, and I think Mrs. Flynn would echo, this has been an outstanding program and kids are really enjoying it. Then this isn't, you can eat breakfast seven thirty to eight and then get a snack. You can't get both. You get one or the other. But we have found immediately that having an opportunity a little later in the day is more advantageous for the students. Do we get reimbursed and is it kind of a money thing? Yes, but you know what's more important? Is having kids fed with quality nutrition that keeps them focused in school. And, and what this tells me is we must have had a lot of hungry kids before lunch. And I don't know about anybody else, but you don't want me hungry for very long. Because it just doesn't focus, just the, the ability for kids to focus and, and have food. I will tell you this, I don't know why our meal programs don't include an afternoon grab and go. Because our student athletes and, and kids who participate in activities after school, for the love of Pete, they, they may eat lunch at eleven thirty and they're not eating again until six thirty or seven at night. And they have to find something to get them through the day. So I wish they would have an afternoon program to keep kids from just heading off and buying less than nutritionally ideal foods, but that's a, a topic for another day. We're having great success with grab and go. And I appreciate the extra effort that the kitchen staff and Mrs. Flynn reworking the schedule of semester. That's not an easy task, working with that kitchen crew to pull this off. So kudos to the kitchen staff, Alicia, Jenny, and Nikki for pulling this thing off. The next thing, exciting. Today at about three thirty, they fired up one of the new HVAC units at the gymnasium. It is, tomorrow, E P M is gonna be here and put in their programming software and the north unit on the back of the school will be fully functional. They should have the south unit fired up by the end of this week. They were running tests on the north one today, but it was on and it was functioning. You may see all the shiny duct work on the outside of the building that because of supply issues, the, the insulation, it will end up looking like the units at the grade school. The outside duct work won't be insulated. They can't get the materials and it probably won't be insulated until May. But they are insulated inside the duct work, a half inch of insulation. But they are insulated inside the duct work, a half inch of insulation, so it's not just bare metal. But the good news is that project is moving forward. The additional heater for the shop is installed and functioning as well. So they have heat back in the metal shop. Another big win, if you've been to the gymnasium for a basketball game, you may have seen our new safety pads at the end there. That I believe, actually, I had a patron yesterday telling me, you know, that's a gymnasium we can be proud of. The floor was resurfaced the summer that I guess I started. And now we have those new pads and all I've heard is good feedback. And student organizations have paid the majority of that bill between National Honor Society, Stuco, and Paw Print. That is students seeing needs and being willing to use their organizations to help. So I think it looks great and I agree with that patron. We can be proud of our gym, it looks excellent. Another thing I want to talk to you about, we talked about LED lights in a previous meeting. And Oklahoma LED did come and do a complete audit. And I want to give you some results from that, just food for thought. They identified district-wide that we have 1,287 fixtures in this district. Based on our kilowatt usage, what they did was look at every bulb, figure out what wattage it pulled, calculated a 12-hour day, and tried to separate out what our lighting energy usage and cost was from all other HVAC tools in the shop, all that stuff. So our annual kilowatt per hour usage with our fluorescent bulbs annually is 282,002 kilowatt-hours. If we were to convert LED to all the fixtures they audited, our kilowatt-hour usage would drop to 99,876 kilowatt-hours. Currently, our lighting-only energy bill annually is $42,768, according to this audit. If we replaced that, all of our fixtures to LED, our annual energy cost should be $15,147. So we're looking at an annual savings of $27,621. In their proposal, they of course include a price for this. The price is $130,000. In the junior, senior high school, that includes complete new fixtures, not just bulb replacement. So as we've talked about, that older building, built in 96, and in a phase of its life where you start talking about soft remodel, which is interior remodel, this would take care of all the lighting functions in that building as a step in a soft remodel situation. It would go, it would take all of these square boxes and put them with modern LED light fixtures. It doesn't include the entire gymnasium being converted to LED lights in that price. So you say, where do we come up with $130,000? And there's a couple of options. We could just write a check, which is a little challenging. Or we can take our monthly savings and turn that into a lease purchase for a five-year term, a 60-month term. And according to their calculations, it would not require money out of pocket that we are not already spending on electric for lights, if that makes sense. We keep our relatively high electric bill for five years, and it basically is a pay-for-itself kind of situation. So I just wanted to throw that out there. There's a couple of options on the company that they use. One of the options was an annual payment, another option was a monthly payment. You go the annual payment, you have 12 months deferred. So from the time of the signing, the annual payment would be $28,696 a year after you sign the agreement. A monthly payment would be $2386 to finance this project. So those are some numbers. I have two of these books, if this is something that you would be interested in looking at, I'd be more than happy to loan you one. Just to give you an idea, when their auditor was here, if you look here, this is where it starts with the high school. And every single light bulb has been accounted for in that building. And it is just pages and pages of light bulb data and kilowatt or wattage usage translated into, translated into energy usage for them to come up with these calculations. There are multiple options with this thing, we don't have to do that. We can look at hybrid lights, just like I plugged in here and told you about. We've reduced four bulbs to two. These are hybrid lights that use a ballast or don't use a ballast, it doesn't make any difference. It would be significantly cheaper to just replace all the bulbs. And then when something burns out, we direct wire them, do away with the ballast, and start from there. Something that I would say to ponder as we continue this discussion is, do we want to start phasing in that soft remodel? We did the building tour over there. You know, the tile floors in the commons are cracked, not looking good. The building needs a facelift, or we're satisfied with the way it looks. A facelift like that would take another source of funding that I don't want to mention right now. But at some point in time, if we don't take care of our facilities, it's the same situation, look at the parking lot, that'll be our facilities eventually if we don't maintain and take care of what we have. So just something to think about. We can continue to have the discussion, there's no rush on this. But I, I just wanted to show you that some of these conversions.
Mr. Grant, John?
Yes.
Did they provide any, any numbers as far as just replacing bulbs and not fixtures?
Not this company, not this company, but a different company did. And we're looking at about $8,000 maybe for bulbs.
This company said in the beginning that they did do that, but then they found that they had to go back and ballasts were going out and where the bulbs screw in, the stones would go bad. So they've since gone to just doing fixtures when they redo with their bid.
Yeah, John happened to be here in the office when the guy dropped by, so he was able to sit in. They just found that going back and back and back wasn't in the company's best interest, so they don't mess with it. They redo everything and get an LED set from the, from the get-go.
Is the rewiring, is that something that we could do in-house? Or does that require expertise that only they can provide us?
Well, it is disconnecting a ballast in every unit, live wires. I, I wouldn't do it, I've been shocked enough.
But, but our maintenance staff, that's something that wouldn't be out of their expertise level? And that would just be after the ballast would go bad, correct?
Yes, basically, that'd be like replacing the ballast, and I'm sure that they've replaced them before because if the lights don't come on, they have to replace that. Basically, you just take the ballast out and hardwire it, and then you go on.
Yeah. What are they saying longevity would be on these new kind of fixtures? The light bulbs are guaranteed 100% replacement for five years, and they say the lifespan will be 10. And if, if the five-year timeframe, and you know, we put dates in on these. When Dennis replaced these, we took a Sharpie and wrote the date as to when the bulbs were installed. Because our test bulbs come with a five-year span as well, so. These, these are a different commercial. We, we had discussions about LED bulbs that go out in residential settings. Because I think anybody who has LEDs probably experienced that. You think, wait a minute, I thought it said 10 years. They explained to us, and he was a salesman, I get that. But they explained to us that this is a different caliber of LED module or crystal or whatever he called it, that is more industrial than what you're getting at Home Depot or Lowe's.
He claimed there's some kind of a, I think he likened it, it's similar to the ballast, but they call it like a starter motor that can go out. And they've replaced about as many of those as they've replaced bulbs in the 10-year span as those. Basically, be like if your ballast doesn't go out, it doesn't fire up, it doesn't do whatever it does to the LED. So another interesting thing that I didn't know about the light bulbs themselves.
It's an interesting concept, I'm just looking for ways to save money. But you know, with a lot of things, I was talking to somebody the other day, and I said, you know, and you agriculture guys can understand this. When you go from a 20-foot header to a 40-foot header, it costs a lot of money to get more efficient. And that's how I'm kind of looking at this. I know these are going to take investments, but in the long run, will it save us money and make us more efficient? Because efficiencies are how we're going to survive.
So what's the estimated annual savings, you said $21,600?
$27,600.
$27,600. So essentially, it pays for itself in five years, and then we have another five years of savings.
That was their sales pitch, yes.
That was the pitch.
If we paid the same, if we basically kept our high bill and paid it for five years, the extra, like, say our bill's $3,000, $2,000 goes to them, $1,000 goes to the lights. And in five years, we hope that it's.
And then we could just replace bulbs, which would be cheaper.
And then we still have the savings of $21,600.
For the next five years is $100,000. Interesting concept, definitely something to bounce around and ponder.
And as we said, that puts another 10 years on that building. And so where do we, where do we look at this? Is this a start to that soft remodel? Because like he said, it'll be all new fixtures and it'll be all new, all the lights will look new. So if you did then go into redoing floors or redoing other things, the lights would not have to be touched in that setting. They looked at the grade school, but for the most part, the majority of the work was required at the high school. So it didn't seem to save much money when they broke it down, building by building.
I believe if we only did junior, senior high, it was about $104,000. So when I question that, it's just the fact that there are a lot of LED lights in the elementary school already. And the fixture replacement wasn't as, there's so many exposed like this that it's not a fixture replacement like at the junior, senior high school. So save $30,000, but as, as the board progresses into five and 10-year planning, you have to figure out what you want to invest where in the long term. So that's all I had, just food for thought.
And that's what I was going to say, they weren't on here, I was going to move to you guys next. Do you have anything you would like to add to your report?
I just have one quick thing, and it's because it came up so quickly at the beginning of the year. For our board members who've been on the board for a while, we've kind of walked around at different times and we looked at our playground and outside area. And one of the things that we don't have, a lot of our benches or picnic tables. There is a grant through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment where they use recycled tires. And they can take that, those tires, and they can convert those into playground surfaces, but they can also make them into benches and tables. That grant application is due January 15. I had looked at doing it last year, but then it just didn't work out for whatever reason. But I will go ahead and submit that as well again this year. It should not be an out-of-pocket cost for us if we're approved, so we're just going to put that out there.
I was going to add that if you're in the high school, to go into the boys' high school locker room over Christmas break, Bob Lovelace did an amazing job, Chris helped him clean, and we ended up epoxying the floors. We kind of did it as a trial, how much it was going to cost us and see how much we could do on our own to do a nice remodel of it. They took the benches off, painted the stands. My dad actually sandblasted them, and they went back and painted them, they sanded, repolliated them, and they looked awesome. So hopefully, we can do maybe another one over spring break, and then the other two in the summertime, and then figure out what to do with the shower portion, they were only able to do the concrete. The second thing, it's on your report, but the football team is looking at doing some fundraising and one of, for the summer, to possibly buy guardrail caps. And a lot of people probably have no idea what that is, but they're like, things you put over your helmets, and they reduce the concussions by 33%. So they're being very proactive and trying to raise money. And the other thing is the girdles. And just in case you hear, and then, you know, we're going to send a thing out to parents, but the high school, we're going to ask the high school parents buy the girdles from now on. The boys provided them, they're ripped and no longer can be used. And so just to try to save money, plus it's an item that maybe not needs to be shared. We will still provide for junior high, just they don't seem to, they're not as warm, as hard. But they have some really great ideas for fundraising, so to be determined that will be coming. But very happy with the football staff because they've been working very hard to come up with ways to purchase some of their own equipment that they need.
I would, I would just like to second going and seeing that locker room because, you know, we did that walkthrough. By the time they sandblasted and painted the pedestals, and by the time they sanded and refinished the benches, it really does look phenomenal. And it was a minimal cost, the epoxy kit for that one locker room was $100. And we were kind of, we didn't know where this was all going to go. But I don't know that we have $200 in that whole facelift.
No.
And it looks incredible.
It does. And Bob did a fantastic job, which is very exciting to know that his capability. So I'm like, oh, we have project for you. So I'm excited to do the other ones, and they did. I went in and helped him over Christmas break, and we did it in a couple hours. I mean, there's several steps to it, but the actual epoxy didn't take too bad, and it looks good. And it will last a long time.
Kind of that tan that you sprinkle the chips on and stuff, it looks brass.
But we got light blue and blue and white chips.
Yeah, it's gray with blue and black chips and white chips, it looks phenomenal, yeah.
And at the elementary school over winter break, our custodians did a great job. They painted the floor of the boys' bathroom, and it's amazing what just that paint did to make the boys' bathroom look so much better as well.
One other thing, the M P L tournament, as most of you know, is coming up next week. So we are still looking, I believe, for some gatekeepers, if anyone's available. It's a massive undertaking, because we run two gates, and it's a very long night. And Booster Club does a great job of finding us workers, but I think they're still missing a few, they do shifts. So anyone that can help, we would love, love to help. So we do a great job of hosting it, and it's great for our community and our school. Continue that process.
Did you guys catch that on Zoom? We're still looking for gatekeepers for the M P L tournament. If you're willing to work or something, let Nikki know. And if you get a chance to look at the locker room at the high school, it's been redone. So that's kind of what the discussion's been. Okay. Thank you, guys. That, I think that brings us to our first executive session for personnel. Hour to start, okay? We will have an hour to start. We are currently 8:10, so 8:10 to 9:10.
How's the move?
I second.
Okay. Motion by David, seconded by Gina, that U S D 298 Board of Education go into executive session at 8:10 for 60 minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel, and that the Board of Education return to open meeting at 9:10 in the Board of Education conference room. The executive session is required to protect the privacy of non-elected personnel exempt under coma. Any other discussion? All in favor?
7-0? Okay.